Everyone, the time is now six P M and the Spring Lake Board of Commissioners work session is now called to order. I do ask that you silence all your cell phones and please keep any side by conversations to be absolute minimums out of respect for the business of the town. All right, I would like to invite Pastor Morris to the podium to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and dedication. Please stay and join us if you so choose to.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on a ground indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Father, we take these moments so deeply, Lord. Just thank you for a town that is willing to submit themselves to you. Thank you for a board of leadership in this town, Lord, that's just willing to listen for your voice. So we just pray over this meeting, these meetings to come, Lord, that you would just have your way in this place, have your way in your people, Lord, and just draws closer to you. Ask your protection over our fire, police, and servants of this town, Lord. Just have your hand of protection over it. Just thank you for everything that you're doing in this town, Lord. Just bring us all together, come against divides and things like that. Lord, just bring us together so we can just hear your voice, serve you, and, Lord, just make this town a great place. We just thank you for it all tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen. Pastor Morris, don't you let the audience know what church you're in?
Yeah, Big Water Church.
Thank you. So now I'll call for any additions or additions to the agenda. Mayor Broden? Why am I off? I should have called City Council. Calhoun County School District Director Dr. Mary Hill is here with us today. And we'll be adding our two presentations, item B. Are there any other additions or additions to the agenda? None. Now I'll call for approval to begin. Commissioner Ponceos?
Salute.
Commissioner Chabot, any discussion? All in favor, motion carries. Now we'll go to the approval of the consent items, which are the draft minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting, Budget Amendment B A thirteen, and the D S C A Access Agreement ten, four ten zero five zero one seven five six, oh, three six seven one. Commissioner Ponceos?
Salute.
Commissioner Lachman?
Second.
Any discussion?
One correction on Budget Amendment thirteen. The last line under revenues, it says, I think it says four more things, that should be investment earnings. That's my, I did them all on account. But if they're totals, the same.
Thank you. And now everyone has a question. If you could have a little time, I'll just show your disc. All right, on there with said additions or corrections. There, okay. Motion carrying. We will now move on to our public comments section. Again, there will be, this thing's led to show you the appropriate timeframe. You are only limited to three minutes, and the board will not respond to any questions or comments within thirty five. We will begin with Mr. Justin Canada. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Justin Canada, here with Legacy Rolls. Here to give you guys an announcement on a new restaurant with the name of Spring Lake. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for having us here. Thank you, Mr. Morris, for being very, very, very welcoming. You know, it's been a very smooth transition. I personally moved from Boston in November to Fayetteville, and it's been a new experience for me. But well, coming into Spring Lake has been really nice. Less about me, more about the business. So we're opening Legacy Rolls. It is going to be a slider shop, a very, very nice white hassle with quality, quality food, fresh ingredients, no preservatives in our bread. We have a hundred fifty year old bread recipe that is kind of like a sweet roll. But again, so no preservatives, kinks wine, but safe for you to eat. So we're open, we're having a great open March seventh weekend, which is in about two weeks. In the meantime, we're going to be in a soft opening phase. I welcome you guys all to come and try lunch. We should be there from about nine to five most days. So definitely come and try us out. We're going to be offering burgers, fried fish, fried chicken, pork belly, ham cut fries, coleslaw for lunch. And then for breakfast, we're going to be bacon, egg, cheese, sausage, egg, cheese, ham cut hash browns. We're going to be offering coffee options, both hot and ice. And then we are also going to be having house made pastries, so cinnamon rolls, blueberry rolls, and whatever else we add in the future. It's all really, 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 really good, combined. I think we're going to do pretty good over there. We're located right next to Comparate Foods on North Bryant Boulevard, right where I think it's K D used to be. Yep, so it's a new spot in that plaza. We're going to bring some life to that plaza as well, and we're just really excited about the addition. We're bringing this to Spring Lake. It's a great community, and I think we're going to make it a little bit better, giving guys a community space. So that's my two minutes.
I will bring up Mr. Jerry Canada.
So first of all, I'd like to thank you all for having us, the commissioners and mayor. I'm Jerry Canada. I am actually a resident of Spring Lake. I moved here, I believe, in September. I am, that was my son, just for the record. That was my oldest son, just for the record. Yeah, that was my oldest son. I'll give you a little background about Legacy Rolls and why we're here. This was a process that we had been going through for about a year, trying to figure out where we should open up. We decided we were looking at Charlotte, we were looking at Chapel Hill, around the Durham area, and the Cumberland Chapel Fayetteville area. After research and interviewing, looking at places, we chose Spring Lake. And that was a choice that we were very happy with. And this is, and I tell people, we are a private franchise, hopefully private franchise restaurant. And hopefully this is store out of, hopefully many in the future potentially, but we'll see. But we decided that this is going to be our opening phase. This is going to be our store, our innovation store, where we try to bring people along. We're hiring still right now. We're hiring a lot of people locally, so if anyone's looking for jobs, we're hiring all positions. We have a future that we think is bright. About me, I'm thirteen years out of North Carolina. I was twelve years in Chapel Hill, around the Durham area, originally from New York. I'm also a attorney. I did intellectual property law in New York and in Boston for the past twenty five years. So this is a career changer for me, and we're here for, like I said, we're here for law. What I wanted to do, though, specifically, with my time left, was to say how impressed I was at the process of your offices here at Spring Lake. I have to give a personal shout out to the Fire Commissioner, the Building Inspector, and especially Mrs. Patricia Hickman, who guided us along this process. This was our first restaurant. I've never done this before. You all made it as efficient and easy as possible for me to open up here. And I wanted to thank those people so much, because I don't think, we only started this in September. And we, today is our first opening day. We literally got approval from Cumberland County two days, so we opened up our store about three hours ago. We sold, we got our first customer in. About our grand opening, we're going to do a whole weekend with a seven week end. April, April, March, and stay. It's going to be right at our shop, so figure about coming out and supporting us. We're going to be doing some advertisements, we're going to be doing some free giveaways. It's a friend and family safe space. In addition to our restaurant, we also have what we're calling a coffee shop. It's a, we have a big space, it's about twelve thousand square feet. And once you come in, you'll see that it's all changed up. We have some lounges and couches and books and photos on walls and things like that, so people can have, you know, if you're doing interviews for, you know, a small business, you can come by and sit down at our lounge. So that's all happening. We couldn't be more proud to be here, and we look forward to the long relationship with this town in the years to come, because we're here for the long run. So thank you again, and I wish we could stay for the rest of the week, but we are exhausted. We are exhausted, but thank you all again, and we look forward to seeing you all and coming by and trying some of our specials.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. All right. We will continue on with our first presentation of the evening. Our Spring Lake revaluation, Ms. Tammy Batello, Chief Realty and Mapping for Cumberland County.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mr. Charlie Olesky. Just to introduce myself, I'm Amy Sebald, Tammy Batello, Chief Realty Mapping for Cumberland County Tax Administration. I'd also like to go ahead and introduce a few people to my staff that we brought with me, in case you have some additional questions. I have Thomas Starkey, who is our V residential appraiser. Beside him is Wayne Robinson, he's our Appraiser Supervisor. And beside him is Joe Charney, he's our V commercial appraiser. Just wanted to let you know. And just as we begin. Okay, so we'll begin with just an overview about revaluation process. We're going to talk a little bit about what revaluation is, and give you a little bit of revaluation results. We're going to have details about some of the assessed value, our communications with the taxpayers, appeal support, which we will have appeal support going on, tax relief available for citizens, our scheduling, key set funds, and contact information. So just general information, some of our statute sheets on the ones that determine and guide that we have to revalue property at least every eight years. And that's for General Statutes one oh five, that's two eighty six. Cumberland County, the last revaluation we performed was January one, twenty seventeen, so it has been eight years since we've had a reval. Revaluation is simply the process of updating real property values to reflect a fair market value as a revaluation date, January one, twenty twenty five. Revaluation, tax, property tax values generally do not change year beginning after revaluation until the next, unless something's changed about the property. So if you have new construction, you have additions, or something could be removed from the property. Otherwise, the tax value would remain the same until next June evaluation. Revaluation objective is it's to appraise all real property in the county at a hundred percent of its market value as defined by the statutes that govern us. North Carolina General Statute one oh five, that's two eighty three, says we have to value all property, real and personal, as far as practical by the appraised and valued of its true value in money. And of course, true value in money is talking about market value. And the definition of market value in the statutes, and one is typically well known across the board for market value, is it is the price estimated in terms of money at which the property will change hands between a building and financially able buyer and seller, neither being under any duress or compulsion to buy or sell, and having knowledgeable or have a reasonable knowledge about the uses to which the property can be adapted for and for which it's capable of being used. As far as tax equity and fairness, revaluation ensures property values accurately reflect their market value, ensuring that the property tax value is applicable across all taxpayers. Revaluation is not conducted directly, contrary to, you know, what some taxpayers may believe. It's to bring property back into equity with a fair market value at one point in time. Revaluation includes, general revaluations are conducted by applying mass appraisal techniques in conjunction with our computer assisted mass appraisal, CAD software. We don't do fee appraisal, we do mass appraisal. And just a little about Cumberland County, we met live with a new computer software in twenty twenty. We have a previous software we've used since the early eighties, so it's been applying in November. And this is actually the first revaluation completed in this new software. Paying and pre property sales, hard revaluations, we will do those. The transactions that are consistently, the statute are qualified, which means that, you know, that they're not under any duress, that value to market value would be. And for this revaluation, we've considered over forty five thousand qualified sales and analyzing market patterns and trends. Residential, commercial, and industrial properties, all real property, is under covered under revaluation. Markets, your sales comparison approach, costs, and income models are developed when we do this mass appraisal. The sales comparison approach is used on most residential properties. The income approach is used on commercial income properties and properties, such as your hotels, hotels, apartments, shopping centers, any stores, warehouses, local home parks. I think I've covered them on my list, too. Other properties use the cost approach models that we set for reval. Okay, so what everybody's looking for, assessed value versus taxable value. For this revaluation, the twenty twenty five assessed value is thirty nine billion, three hundred six million, four forty five oh sixty four. That's not the taxable, after you have minus out any exemptions, exclusions, and the estimate, what we're estimating that to be is four billion, seven twenty eight, seven fifty ninety six. That would give us a beginning taxable for the county of thirty four billion, five hundred seventy seven million, six nine four nine sixty eight. Okay, the twenty twenty five beginning tax value can be increased or reduced by different things. New applications for exemptions, exclusions, deferments. Some of those could be their elderly exclusions, disabled exclusions, disabled veterans exclusions, builder inventory, and present use deferment, which is your farm program, what most people are used to hearing it called. Results of appeals can also change that taxable value, as we have appeals and we work them, we can make changes. And legislative decisions can change, you know, what happens to our tax. The bottom line, the total real property assessed value has increased over the same years a sixty four point seven percent. That's compared to the twenty twenty four assessed value, which was accomplished by the twenty seven revaluation standards. That was twenty three billion, eight hundred sixty seven million, five sixteen two sixty seven. Of course, the beginning taxable, on the beginning assessed value, as I told you, was thirty nine billion, three oh six million, four four five oh six four. That's how we get sixty four point seven percent. This indicates for January one, twenty twenty five increase, in an assessed value of ten fifteen billion, four thirty eight million, nine twenty eight, seven ninety seven. Some details about these assessments. Little bit of breakdown by property type. In real property components, for residential, overall change, residential's seen a great percent of increase, overall eighty six point two percent increase. Commercial overall change has seen a twenty seven percent increase, so that is a total sixty four point seven percent increase. And breaking down the residential results just a little bit by property type, just to give a little bit of more information. Our single family homes have increased overall by eighty four point two percent. Your multifamily, now I must say multifamily businesses, we're talking apartments, we're talking your duplex, triplex, quadplex, they've increased a hundred and sixty seven point seven percent. Condominiums have seen a hundred and twenty one point two percent increase, and residential vacant land has seen a sixty three percent increase overall for residential. Commercial results, just break that down a little bit for you. Our income properties that we spoke about, the shopping centers, apartments, and things, those have seen an overall thirty three point four percent increase. Other improved commercial, those would be your things that are not in funding, could be your office buildings, your banks, you're expanding commercial. They've seen a twenty two point one percent increase. Commercial vacant land has seen a forty point eight percent increase, and industrial properties have seen an eighteen point five percent increase. And just to break it down a little bit by the municipalities, how this values, really values have come to what increases are in municipalities. Fayetteville overall change has seen a sixty one point one percent increase. Home Mills is seventy point eight percent. Here at Spring Lake, we've seen a sixty two percent increase overall. Stedman, sixty two point six. Wade, seventy four point eight. Falcon, fifty seven point seven. Godwin has seen a larger increase of a hundred and seven. London, seventy three percent, and Eastover, sixty four point nine percent. Just break that down a little bit for you. Property type by municipality, kind of between the residential change and your commercial change. Fayetteville has seen an eighty eight point four residential change, and again, the twenty seven point five in commercial, which equals out the total increase. Home Mills, you can see we have here eighty eight point three for residential, commercial thirty eight point three, and their overall change of seventy point eight. Spring Lake, we have seen a large increase in residential, one twenty one percent. Commercial, we've seen a thirty seven point two percent increase, for your overall change of sixty two percent. Stedman, seventy seven point three residential, twenty two point six for commercial, and sixty two point six for your overall. Wade, we've seen an eighty six point four percent increase in residential, thirty two point one in commercial, and seventy four point eight overall. Falcon, again, has had kind of a nice residential increase of one oh three point six, twenty five point eight commercial, and fifty seven point seven for overall. Godwin, a hundred and sixteen point one residential, forty seven point two commercial, and one oh seven overall. London, ninety six point four residential change, twenty seven point seven on the commercial change, and seventy three percent overall. And Eastover, seventy two point one residential change, twenty two point one for commercial, and sixty four point nine overall. One thing I would like to add in front of this increase, it's not just an increase in the value of the properties that are there, but it would also be increase of things that maybe were not listed in previous, that would not list it, new construction or other improvements that were found that were handled. That would also be included in the normal visit increase in that for the twenty twenty five tax year. Okay, so as far as communicating with taxpayers, this presentation was actually done for our commissioners, for them a little bit before we mailed the notices. So the notices were mailed out on Friday, February twenty first, so if you may already gotten your notice. All that notice that you have, it does have the twenty twenty five, it has the value, little block at the top goes to your value, they have a description on both sides. And we have it on there in the writing, where to find information on the website, instructions on how to file an informal appeal, which is where the process now, payment appeals. And on the back of that notice that has the informal appeal form, that's something you can fill out and submit to us. With that notice that you receive, there should have been a brochure, revaluation brochure that has some frequently asked questions for taxpayers, that hopefully will answer some of the questions for you. We do have a call center open, available to answer questions. Our appraisers are waiting in now, it's open on, when we get to the times, but we do have that open now. And press releases will be sent, and perhaps some have already been sent out, to advise taxpayers of the revaluation, and some of the things connected with it. On our website, we do have some more additional information about fee appraisal. We have a free evaluation, a free appraisal page, has additional information linked to it. And we have some videos on our website, and if you look at them, you may see two stars there on it, that are with us tonight. Talking about the frequently asked question brochure that was mailed with it, that does answer some of the questions. Some of these are main questions a lot that we get every revaluation, you know, what does the notice mean? What is revaluation? Who decided to value my property? What is market value, and what can I do if I disagree with the assessed value of my property? And what happens after I appeal? So we do have a revaluation call center, and instead we've actually started to open today. And that number is one one oh six seven eight seventy eight hundred. It's open on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from eight to five. Appraisers are the ones that are answering the phone, so they'll be able to answer any questions on the times. And then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're open, you can be there from eight to seven P M to give those opportunities after five, if they don't have an opportunity, a little bit more time that they can call for that question. So appraisers are in the call center, and they'll be able to explain the revaluation process, review the tax notice with them, and their property record card, answer basic questions, they can also schedule an appointment if someone wants to come in and talk, sit down and talk to his appraiser, we're taking appointments for that. And also explain how to submit the written informal appeal, and explain what other information the taxpayer can provide us to support their appeal. If they don't feel the package right, they can get those things supported out. So part of appeal support, we, property owners are requested to take some steps before they appeal. Review their records to the property reporting updates, they're ready to go to the website, their property record card under the real estate, search for your property, review everything we have listed. If we have something incorrectly listed, then you put that on the appeals form and submit it into us. Prepare their tax value of actual sales of similar properties. On the website also, if they're going to be, if it's a residential property, they're going to be able to see their sales comparison approach, and other sales of their neighborhood, market area, that they can see how things have sold. If they have property values they feel incorrect, they're encouraged to submit that in formal appeal form. Try to make it as easy as possible for the taxpayer, to get them a fair way to build their property. And property records can read or read online, like I said, on the website. They can also call our call center, and appraisers can go over that with them, too. Residential documentation that supports a different value, if someone's had a recent fee appraisal, they can submit that to us. It doesn't mean we're going to change what that fee appraisal has, but we will look at it, make sure that we're not, a lot of times a fee appraisal, they may note something out of property that we don't know on our end for tax assessment. So sometimes we need information from the fee appraisal that we weren't aware of, and we'll also look to verify, you know, that we have them listing correct, and we will consider the fee appraisal when the value came up with. Preparedity market analysis, a lot of real estate agents are, there are already some that are out there, you know, to do prepared market analysis. If somebody gets that done, send that in with their appeal, and we will look at that and consider that. Comparable sales data collected by the property owner. As I said on the website, sales in the neighborhood are there, they can also go look in another neighborhood, so there are sales available to the taxpayers to see what sales have happened. And they can pull their own sales and say, you know, provide that information to us. And if they have any conditions about their property, you know, something that they want us to know, you know, has a, some type of condition, if they send any photos into this, explaining that condition is very helpful to us. And if they have any conditions about their property, you know, something that they want us to know, you know, has a, um, some type of condition, if they send any photos into this, explain that condition, it's very helpful to us. And, um, also, commercial documentation that supports a different value, same as residential, but also for those income properties, as we have talked about a little bit. Uh, we are asking that they provide income and expense information for the three years property revaluation, that helps us to review whether incomes can be, whether property has, and helps us when we're considering that appeal. In all cases, the property owner can provide anything they deem important, and anything at all that they find, we will look at, review, and consider when we look at their appeal. Um, one thing important to remember though is that percent change in value above doesn't justify appeal. It has been eight years, there's been quite a bit of market change in this industry. Um, percent change in value applied to the twenty-twenty-four tax field does not equal the twenty-five tax field. Because we're doing the assess value for twenty-twenty-five, and as you know, the municipalities of the county will be setting, um, tax rates and things for the fiscal year, uh, the June thirtieth, I believe. So you can't take your current assess value by the current tax rate, it's likely not gonna stay the same, depending on the decision set before it's made. Um, a second revaluation notice, we're now within thirty, ninety days of submitting an informal appeal. Um, we're gonna try to get all the appeals before that time, we will be notified when every taxpayer who submitted one, what the value decision was. And on that note, I'll also let them know if they wanna pursue further, what are the next steps is in the appeal. And once they get that, that is they'll have fifteen days, the next step will be to abort, to appeal to the board of D N R., and they'll have fifteen days to appeal to the board, once they get that notice. So, this is, uh, I, this is my first revaluation, working with the county, um, and this is quite a bit of market change overall. The last revaluation that I didn't get for was the two thousand nine, where we saw about a thirty percent, and twenty-seventeen, the value of residential went down. Um, so revaluation in two thousand nine, if we're gonna look at about kind of what happens with that, we have about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred parcels did. We have a hundred and forty-three thousand fifty-four parcels for the twenty-twenty-five revaluation. Um, in two thousand and nine, with that thirty percent increase, we had about eleven point seven percent of deal. Um, so we're not sure exactly what to expect, um, we had about fifteen hundred, only one point two of those, percent of those that went on to board. Because we did try very hard to list the taxpayer audit inform, and to try to resolve, you know, that, I was having a problem with that before, we'd have to get to board. Uh, we don't know what to expect, like I said, this is, uh, eight years, but we've also seen quite a bit of increase. Um, all taxpayers filing, the time of the appeal that we heard. Um, tax relief is available, we talked about that a little bit, some of this can change what that taxable number, that bottom number should be. Um, we have exclusions for elderly and disabled, um, except the greater of twenty-five thousand, or half of their assessed value for qualifying, um, under. And there are, um, age and front and income criteria for that, all that information's on the website also. Um, disabled veterans, except the first forty-five thousand in the assessed value of the disabled veteran, or the unmarried or unmarried spouse for the principal residents. And they're totally, they can be totally permanent service connected disability, and they, all of these are excluded, the first two, the deadline to apply for those is June first, so there's a five to June first. Those exclusions, when you receive your, uh, people receive their revaluation notice, I want to point out, the elderly, disabled, or veterans exclusion is not shown on that revaluation notice. That's done off the bill side, and we'll be showing the bill as you can. Um, so when people get their revaluation notice, they don't see that disabled veteran exclusion on there, that's the reason for that, it doesn't even respond. It will be on the bill side, it's not on the, um, real estate side of the house, it's on the bill side of the house. Uh, present use study, that's for your agriculture, agriculture, forest land, and sound management, and of course, that's a tax deferment. Um, and the deadline to apply for that is January, uh, was January thirty-first. Remaining twenty-twenty-five revaluation schedule, of course, remaining, we've already accomplished the first one, since the mail-in notices out. The second one, our, uh, call center is operational, and it will be operational for the full thirty day appeal period, which is gonna be through March twenty-fourth. Uh, appointments to meet with an appraiser, we're gonna hold them from February twenty-sixth to April eleventh. And an informal appeal period ends March twenty-fourth, so anybody who wants to appeal, they need to get that in full appeal, uh, by that time. However, we will begin accepting board equalization review appeals as soon as that period closes. So honestly, if somebody misses that, that deadline, and they send them an appeal, we're gonna consider it a board, a equalization review appeal, the appeal is still valid, it's just gonna go the formal route. The board of equalization review convenes to appeal appeals on April twenty-third, and they will adjourn from accepting the appeals, May twenty-eighth. That doesn't mean they won't be here, you know, have an hearings to decide on the appeals, they just won't accept anymore. And D E R. continues to hear timely appeals, uh, May twenty-nine through the following twenty-twenty-five, and December if we have to. So some of the key deadlines that we have is the full appeals, like I said, uh, are accepted in March twenty-fourth. Decisions will be mailed within ninety days, we're gonna try very hard, it might be hard depending on the number of appeals we have, but we're, our staff is gonna be real hard to do that. And they still have the opportunity to file a formal appeal with the board within fifteen days of that decision, or anytime the appender board, you know, opens the appeals. Formal board appeals will be submitted to tax office in writing by five o'clock, May twenty-eighth, which is when they adjourn for it to be submitted timely. Um, and then we have some contact information here, but like I said, our lead-out call center is six seven eight seventy-eight hundred. Um, and I told you the dates for that, we have an email address, past real estate at home and county, N C dot gov, that comes straight to the real estate department, people can email their appeal there. If they don't want to mail them in, they can email the appeal in, if they have questions, they can email us, and we will, we will send them a response. And our customer service office is open, six seven eight seven five oh seven, um, for questions, but if it's questions necessarily about the, um, revaluation, or questions about value, that we go to the front, or they don't have to refer to revaluation line, but they can answer general questions, or help somebody check that property listing on one of those five things, or help them with the tax related questions. And our county website is W W W dot county N C dot gov slash tax. So that's the end of our presentation, um, my staff are glad to answer any questions you have.
First, thank you so much for that informative, uh, presentation, you literally answered all the questions that I had, um, during the presentation, but I do want to make sure that our residents, um, are paying attention, because we have a high elderly and low income population, that we are making sure that there is tax relief available if you qualify for that. Um, so make sure that, uh, this huge increase, um, it could affect our property, that what we're paying. And we just wanted to, to know that the resources are there through the county to help subsidize that impact. Mayor President?
Thank you. Um, okay, thank you, um, I also appreciate this, and I'm about in the same place that, um, the Marys. Um, I noticed on lines that the, uh, income limits for, um, the elderly to get help was only thirty-nine thousand, um, a year. Is it possible that they would consider raising that amount, considering how much, and how much time has passed?
Um, those income limits, and those things are actually come to us through D E R. and through legislation, so we're not able as a county to change that, um, that would have to come from the higher up down class. So the county can't let that change.
Okay. All right, thank you. And, um, the other question I had, um, is there an explanation for the one hundred and twenty-one percent increase in residential in, in Spring Lake? Cause to me, it seems like you were underwriting before, and now you caught us back up, and which, you know, was like...
Yeah, and part of the, um, like I said, part of the revaluation is about, um, you know, coming to current market, but it's also about correction, or about things that have been added, or, you know, now. But that's a good question, and it's a good thing I have my lead residential specialist. Um, sorry, cause I forgot to give you any thoughts about, like, that's all that.
Uh, good evening, my name's Tom Starkey, I'm the senior project specialist for residential. One of the big things we saw in here is a lot of renovation going on, and multi-sales going over the years. I have a few here that say, uh, one thousand eight, Lisa Circle, in two thousand eighteen sold for thirty-five thousand dollars. Then it turned around again and sold for forty-two in two thousand eighteen, and twenty-one sold for one thirty-five, five hundred, then again in twenty-three for one seventy-eight. So there's been great growth, and on top of that, just recently, in this past year, y'all had some new construction off Odell. And those are selling between two hundred and seventy-four thousand and three hundred and thirty-nine thousand being sold, with some less pending for three hundred and forty-four thousand. Along with that, with the renovations going on, it's seen a great increase through here, and we feel that being between Fayetteville and Cameron, which are both really growing, that Spring Lake is getting an overflow in that as well. So that's what we're seeing that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cox?
The only question I have, is there some type of form that the seniors can fill out to, to get assistance, or for to see if they qualify?
There, there is an online, there's a tax relief form, uh, for the homestead or elderly, central, I'm not sure exactly how they, they call it, but there is a, an application. Um, and if they even email to the email address we have, tax real estate, or even through the website, we just forget the tax web, if they email that they would like to have an application, um, our staff, that handles that, our assessment staff, they will get that to you. And they'll be able to answer any questions they have.
And that goes for, uh, disabled veterans as well, the exemptions forms are online for disabled veterans to fill out. Good job.
Okay, there. Well, I guess the good news is the property values went up. The bad news is the tax man is, is not available. We'll go back, uh, slide two.
Is it slide two?
Right there, right there. So for residents that are out here, here's some key technicals that, uh, if you haven't got your, your reassessment in the mail today, please call. So on here, it came out, you've got the next thirty days to, to start getting your information together, and what you told me is, on the appeal support, is to review your records of the property, including updates, comparable, uh, properties, also any informal appeals that you're looking to submit. The homeowner needs to do their due diligence so that it, it shows up when they look to, to submit their appeals, that there is supporting documents to substantiate their claim. Uh, they've got some March twenty-fourth, in which to get those, get those in, there is a call center that, that you have listed on here, it's got the phone number for residents to call in. Uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, eight to five mobile work hours, Tuesdays and Thursdays, eight A M. to seven P M., so it gives them, gives them longer time. And when they call in, you said that in my speech, within appraisers?
Within appraisers.
Within appraisers.
Or manager, within appraisers.
So, so they will call in, they have, they've got the call center, uh, phone numbers, emails, so it's really on the residents to kind of work on, on getting their appeals information, forms, so that they can do. A lot of information was put out today, but I wanna make sure that, that our listeners can capture these, these key dates here, so that if they want to submit an appeal, that they've got that opportunity and deadlines to do that.
Yes, sir, and, um, you brought something back up, and I'd like also to say, you know, we all know the, the mail service, they do, they work very hard, they do great jobs, sometimes things don't fly to someone. So if someone does not receive a revaluation notice, they can contact the office, and we can get them up.
Commissioner Plaza?
Hey, Mayor, so, uh, the, thank you for mentioning, by the way, that those forms for the exemptions are online. And, uh, do we happen to know how many exemptions exist in town of Spring Lake at all, would you guys, anybody know that?
Uh, they'll have that information in the, in the answer.
Sure, and, um, anybody that previously filed or was approved for exemption, does that automatically carry over through this revenue?
It, it, well, it, it does, um, they would have to, of course, on, on that bill side, they have to update you the information because of the assessed values. Um, if there's been, of course, a change in ownership that they had, it's not the number of the property, residents, of course, they'll check that. Um, but yes, it will remain unless for some reason they're under audit by that department for something, um, which normally those are the only reasons. Um, by, by statute, that, that department has to audit what they, you know, uh, properties every year, so typically during this time, it's basically gonna be at revaluation, basically, it's just gonna be updated. And of course, a disabled veteran, as long as he hasn't had a change in his, his home, that's, that's just gonna continue, it's just all the assessed value.
Yes, please. The, uh, Ms. Matella, I want you to confirm or give me a little bit more information. Um, we are currently assessing the construction of the two hundred and sixty unit apartment building. And so will it be assessed based on its construction cost, or its income, it's brand new?
You can welcome a expert, thank you.
I'm not a hundred percent sure about this apartment complex specifically, but if it's under construction, it will be valued at cost, and a percentage of that cost based on how much of the construction is complete. Once it's a hundred percent complete, that following year will be based on the income.
After they have some data that...
Yes, sir.
That, you know, what's the real rates, and they get the rates, and they can...
Absolutely.
All right, so I stand the same question in regards to local home parks. Um, so if I have an existing local home park, that's been existing for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years.
Yes, sir.
Um, and they were, if, the valuation in twenty seventeen, is that right? Produced a tax value, or market value based on income. And so now, over the years, after the last eight years, they've seen a reduction in the income because they have a reduction of units.
Sure.
So now that would lead to a lower tax value.
That would, that would lead to a decrease, yes, sir, all this based on the number of units.
Yeah, I'll be talking about that later, so I'm just trying to get you to go down. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on the board? Thank you so much, thank you to your staff, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for letting us have the opportunity to talk to you.
You're welcome, welcome, come back anytime.
All right, that's good, thank you.
All right, go on to our presentation from Dr. Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proti, Board of Commissioners, and of course, our audience. I am, for those of you who don't know me, please excuse me, I'm LaFors. For those of you who do not know me, I am Mary A. Hales, your representative for the county school board, Spring Lake is the district number one. We have been having meetings which have been successful, just to give you a few notes on it, with the both local and state level politicians. Okay, we had a breakfast meeting, which was very, very unofficial, everyone seemed to have come together, and we all seemed to have been on one accord. Then we had just a meeting with all of the county commissioners, as well as people, excuse me, um, for the public, they were invited as well, anyone could have come. So that was also very instrumental, very, um, productive, and everyone seemed to be on the right page, and when I say right page, coming together, wanting the same kinds of things for every district, and I'm referring to schools. I will let you know that oftentimes, I grew up Spring Lake. I do. Um, I've also been out, and I have sat and talked with the principal of Manchester, the principal of the, um, middle school, Spring Lake Middle School. I've also called the principal, Dr. Fetter, over at W T Brown. There are some concerns, and the principals shared, well, it was one specifically at Manchester. So when I returned to Fayetteville, and, uh, took my notes, and shared them with the right department. So I've asked all principals to make sure they contact... So I've asked all principals to make sure they contact me so that I can get the information to the right departments. Because sometimes the general public, we don't know, we don't know who to call, who to go to, or what office to speak about specific things. So I'm, I'm happy to say I have put them on the right track. I think the county commissioners, and this is just me personally, from listening to what has been said in the meetings, I truly believe that they are really considering doing what we, what I call the right things for the right reasons. Okay? You have new members on the county commissioners board as well. They are all about ensuring that, number one, all is treated equitably. And that's what I'm about as well. So those meetings have been productive. I do believe we will be scheduling a meeting with the city council members as well. I just wanted you all to know, hopefully, we now have a strong working knowledge of what needs to be done for all of us. I will continue to advocate for Spring Lake, I bring it up quite often. They do have quite a number of items on an agenda, not, it's not an agenda. It's, how should I say it? Things, a plan, it is a plan, a yearly plan of what's going to be done each year for certain schools. I specifically ensure that Manchester, Spring Lake Middle, and WT Brown, those are the three schools I've particularly asked about. And they quickly pointed out, well, Dr. Hales, don't page, flip your page, page so, 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 which was fine with me. I will be looking out for Spring Lake, if you have any questions at all, please do not hesitate to call me. I had a good time out here a few Saturdays ago at, at Spring Lake Middle. The Deltas held a production of recitals with our young African-American females. Then they had another group who were making quilts. It was very interesting. So I'm not only be coming out here for professional purposes, but to have a little fun as well. Are there any questions for me? Everyone good?
Dr. Hales, thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
I love your passion and zeal, and you know that you have a friend in this board.
Thank you.
And we will support you as we support our children, help us, help you, help our kids.
And that's what it's all about.
Absolutely.
It's all for children. Now, Spring Lake Middle, if you haven't been out here, I think his parking lot has been paved. I hear you know that, I'm so happy to see that. So, and I think Manchester has had some painting done, but some additional painting needed done. So I've already made a phone call and asked them to come out and look at that so they can get that process completed.
I know our clerk in a test to the Manchester meeting, some paint done very, very badly after the hours he spent washing walls during the summer. So we, we understand.
Thank you, and the principal is very passionate about it too. She said, Dr. Hales, if I could just get the paint. She said, I guess about paint, I said, no, but you gotta think about liability with you, with someone else paying it. I told her I would work very hard to make sure that our representatives, our staff members, our workers, our painters, whoever, get out here to complete her school as she'd like to have it done.
Awesome. Mayor Proti?
Thank you, I'm so happy to see you and I am overly joyed by your passion.
Thank you.
You know, I, I went to Manchester when it was Oakdale, and I went to Spring Lake Middle School. Give me that, I'm sorry, give me that.
You sound like for my day, don't you?
And so, you know, so I, I really care. My children also went to those places. My thing is, did Manchester, did they ever get real air conditioning, or they still use it for weddings?
You know, that did not come up, but I'm glad you brought it up.
They may have never been, because this was about a year.
It's about a year.
Half ago, so they, they may have addressed it, it was a topic of concern we brought up with superintendent then.
So maybe that's why the principal did not bring it up to me, it may have been repaired, but I was done with chat.
Okay, and then here was the unsafe things in around Spring Lake Middle.
The what, honey?
Unsafe things.
Well, I brought that up with the principal. You may talk with him yourself, one-on-one, because the indication from him was that he had no concern with it. He said that he knew, and please talk with him one-on-one, because I do not want to put false information out here. And I am not quoting him word for word. But from what he's told to me is that there have been some, because I asked him straight out, what is going on with your fence, please share with me how your fence is doing. I mean, is it steady, is it, does it need replaced, et cetera, et cetera. He said, well, I don't think so, but he does know that some members of the community feels like it should be placed, replaced, I'm sorry, should be replaced. But he didn't seem to have any concern. He did tell me, he says, Dr. Hales, you're wasn't welcome to walk around outside. He even brought up a concern that, I don't know, the field area, it's not accessible, okay? It's, it's not handicap accessible. Huh, that's, that's why, you see, I've talked with him. And he said there was a concern about that. And I want him to let me know what I can do to help that. But he said everyone who's been used there, trying to go there, if they're in a wheelchair, whether the case might be a walker or whatever, they are able to maneuver. Okay, so he did bring that up. But as far as the fence, he, you may want to speak with him, after you talk with him yourself, one-on-one, and then you let me know, because I did bring it up and.
I, I personally mentioned against and, and took pictures. And children have gotten injured because it's unsafe. There's nothing to keep somebody, they were caught over it from tearing the skin off of their body. And, and yeah, it's unsafe.
Did you speak with him yourself?
I, I showed him the pictures and we talked about it, he walked out there.
What don't you do, what? Just let him know that you, that you have spoken with me and that I shared, not to be going back and forth, I really don't like that, but just let him know that you still have a concern, okay? And that you know that he did speak with me and I did bring up the fence. And let's see where that goes, okay? All right.
Mr. Javel?
I just want to say to Dr. Hales, thank you for being on point and showing up. Even though I do not work in Spring Lake, but I still offer coming to our schools, she is showing up.
Thank you.
I was very, very surprised, but very happy to see your faces and have your presence in our schools because it is needed.
Yes.
And thanks for being our voice of Spring Lake, we haven't had that in a long time. So your presence is felt and we thank you for being our advocate. And of course, I'm from Spring Lake, I teach Spring Lake schools and right now I'm the Spring Lake advisory community. So we thank you for being our voice.
You are quite welcome, more than happy to do it. Just keep me posted on any other issues that you may have, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hales.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll now move on to agenda item eight A, our capital project ordinance number twenty-five oh four. Mr. O'Pitney?
Several years ago, the town wastewater treatment plant was flooded. FEMA agreed to reimburse us for a lot of those repairs. However, over the last several years, that project under the emergency's control, that project just did not progress as it should have. We had a project ordinance in the past to do some repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. But we recently changed that project ordinance to use that money to install sewer lines and instead of repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. Jason and I met with the engineer last week. He gave us a list of repairs that are needed at the wastewater plant. They come to probably about a million, three hundred thousand. So not all of these can be completed between nine and June thirtieth. They would have to carry on some of it to next year. So we need to do a capital project ordinance and we just, I took his numbers and listed all the repairs he said needed to be made. And you have the bid or estimates he got from the various contractors. And we put in ten percent contingency and some money for the engineering fees. And it comes to a one point five million. FEMA will reimburse us for these repairs. We do need to get them done, but we are under a timing limit, aren't we? That's correct. And when we do repairs, Jason will submit the invoices to FEMA to have us reimburse for these expenses. Unfortunately, it's a long list and it's an expensive list. So I just ask your approval of this capital project ordinance so we can get started on repairing the wastewater treatment plant.
Mayor Proti?
Oh, I was just going to, I was going to say, did somebody have questions?
Mr. Javel?
Mr. Javel, with everything's going on on the federal side with FEMA, DOGE and everything, is this going to affect the three point five million dollars effects for you like in this, is money frozen? Or I know you said we're under, under a time limit.
This was actually approved several years ago. And I, Jason, if you talk.
That is correct. I actually talked to Amanda, which is our rep for FEMA. So the state, the state actually has our money now, FEMA, I mean, the feds are done with it. The state has it and there's wait for us to go through it. It's sitting in, it's saying it will not affect us at all.
Are there any badge and funds required for this, or is this?
FEMA is usually a seventy-five, twenty-five. The federal pays seventy-five percent and the state pays twenty-five percent. But there are no funds out of our pocket unless we go over, unless it goes over wherever the total amount is.
Mayor Proti?
I just want to make it on a big deal, um, capital project ordinance number twenty-five dash four.
Mr. Javel?
That's it.
Any discussion? All the way over?
Uh-huh.
Most cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you, so. All right, agenda item eight B, board to discuss dissolving the business registration for town businesses. Mr. Rory?
It is me, isn't it? Let's, let's make this as simple as possible. At some point, the state decided we wouldn't have business licenses. The board responded by having a locally adopted ordinance, and I may not be getting all this right, okay? That assesses a fee for every business that operates in Spring Lake. Do not take my numbers as absolute, but the last time I checked, we had billed out for like sixteen thousand dollars in business registration fees and collected about eight thousand. So we're only collecting about half of what we billed out. So the next question should be, what is the cost to get collection at ninety-eight percent? And so how do you think and spend more to collect the remaining eight thousand dollars? Is it something we should be doing? The follow-up question on that is why is this coming up tonight? Is because we are knee-deep and we'll have further conversations later in the evening about our strategic plan and about our budget going forward. You know that we're in a, a state of flux and we've been waiting for these revalued numbers for at least a couple of months, trying to figure out where that was going to fall and how that was going to impact us in total. So there's other questions that we'll have to ask as part of those processes, things like fire inspection fees as well. If I asked Jimmy right now, Jimmy, can I waive taxes?
No.
No, period, you can't do it, okay? So what we do is if we create a fee, then we charge people that fee and then we fail to collect on fifty percent of the people. Now taxed by any other name. So basically, we're just letting fifty percent of people.
They'll waive it.
They'll waive it. But the cost of enforcement would be extremely. So that's the only reason I'm bringing it up tonight is to, as you look forward and we have further conversations regarding the budget, further conversations regarding the strategic plan, I mean, those initiatives associated with strategic plan. You're going to have to make a decision about, do I just keep doing what I'm doing and getting eight thousand and writing off the other eight thousand, which I think is unethical, I don't think is right. Or do you hire someone at a salary that gets sixty thousand dollars so they can collect eight thousand dollars? It's a bad idea. These are the types of decisions that you'll have to make in terms of how we present the budget. And this is just one of those little things that we just want to get out there in front of. My suggestion would be that you just simply eliminate the fee altogether instead of trying to spend ten dollars to chase a dollar. Now, there's, there's value in knowing what the businesses are, because of what this is, I get it, you know? But, you know, trying to collect this on the table is just, I think it is actually financially irresponsible. So I would recommend, I just leave that.
So what I'm hearing is the financial juice isn't worth the squeeze.
I wasn't going to say that. You know, my life, I, yes, I don't, I don't think it is where, and we really talked him about. So now, if you go eliminate it, right, if you just make a decision just tonight, that means that now staff has to go, well, we're going to get that eight thousand dollars next year. If you just make an eight thousand dollar decision, it's very marginal. But you make those decisions and you have to figure out how to, how to take your balance in the budget as you look at it. So that would be my recommendation is that you eliminate it, but.
So if we do eliminate it, where does the additional eight thousand dollars now come from?
You either do it in increased taxes or you do cut expenses, it's just that simple. It's, it's not hard. It's difficult.
So my question is, again, okay, and I'm going to pass somebody who knows a second question. What about the fees that have already been collected for this fiscal year? This registration year, is it a one-time fee and they're registered forever?
Once a year fee is twenty-five dollars. We've only actually collected five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars this year.
And that's for this year?
Yes.
How much?
Five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
The finance guy, right.
So if this fee is paid at the beginning of the year, how is the fee collected?
It is billed out at the beginning of the year like the privilege license used to be.
Please keep your, keep our conversations out, we can hear you over here. Thank you.
You know, we bill it out July, just like we used to do with the privilege license once a year. Supposed to be paid within thirty days. We haven't collected hardly anything in several months, so. And I, I agree with Rory, trying to chase twenty-five, spending a hundred dollars to chase twenty-five dollars is stupid.
Mr. Javel?
Mr. Rory, here's my, my concern on this. We've rewarded those that have not been paid yet. And then those that have paid were basically penalized and keeping their money and talking to the nation for being a good steward in a town of Spring Lake. So have we given any consideration to that as far as if we do eliminate this for those that paid? Are we looking to reimburse them for that money they paid them? And now that eight thousand dollars has become a sixteen thousand dollar concern.
As, as a matter of equity, I think it would be very perfect reimbursement for their.
I do too.
I don't think you should go retroactive to two years or three years. With this term there, I think you should.
Mayor Proti?
Thank you. So if we are talking about not doing this again, would we just not mail statements out next year?
I think it is ordinance driven, ordinance driven, so we have to take it upon by the ordinance. I think it is ordinance driven, ordinance driven, so we have to take it on by the ordinance.
Okay. Which?
So, uh, it's the check into administration, Administration Article Six, Business Registration Ordinance. Commissioner Blasius?
The original reason we put this, created this ordinance was to help with, uh, I believe it was fire and police inspections. So, is that, do we have another mechanism for that? Is that, I mean, is that gonna be resolved or is that gonna still be a problem?
That will be another discussion for another day, but basically, we collect on the same ratio that we bill out for the business at about fifty percent.
On fire and police, on fire inspections?
Yes. So, this, 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 the ordinance moved-
This did not resolve that issue.
It did not resolve that issue.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Now, in case a motion to, um, um, no, this is not mo, we're gonna, yes, we're gonna vote to dissolve the ordinance tonight. Go ahead and look at this, all right? So, in case a motion to dissolve, uh, the business registration for town business ordinance. Commissioner Blasius?
So moved.
Is there a second? May I have a question?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Blasius?
Thank you, ma'am. So, if we look at dissolving this tonight, does that resolve the two or three years fact paid to, to that? Or is this just to dissolve this and that's a, another topic for another day?
I would look at just this this week, not the two years prior.
Okay. So, so then we are looking at reimbursing that five thousand, seven hundred that goes-
Right, for the business registrations for twenty twenty-five only, not go on further than that. Any other discussion? The poll in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, to dissolve the business registration. All right, uh, board discussed planning and manufactured homes. Rory, you're up here.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna go back to it. One of the things that I guarantee is even though you may not like what I say, I'm gonna speak the truth.
That's right.
Even if it's not popular, um, I see that as a matter of ethics. And this is one of those topics. So, I asked questions specifically to the Cumberland County staff in regards to income approach and mobile home parks, knowing this has been a, a topic of discussion in the past and what we need to do in the future. And so, we start with a simple zoning map. You will notice that over here to my right on the wall is a copy of our zoning map. Will you recall when it's actually put up?
No.
It's been within the last three or four months. It's because our ordinance, our law, says it has to be available in the clerk's office, okay? And so, we've got it available in clerk's office and we need it out here for review. And we have conversations whether for an adjustment to the M V D. And you'd be able to see this document. This document with the zoning is available on the Cumberland County G I S website. That's what you're seeing here is this, uh, cut and paste, if you will, of the zoning. I want you to highlight everything that you see, um, what is that light purple? Somebody help me with what that is. Lavender. All right, I appreciate the lavender. Anything that you see on this zoning map is lavender. It's zoned R six A. And so, you'll see that we have them over here and over here and over here. You also heard the tax assessment office, office talking about, um, you're seeing an increase in multifamily and duplexes. It's because, you know, the cost of homeownership is increasing. So, to meet the demand, this middle housing is missing. That's why you see more influx of this, uh, duplexes and stuff being, you know, being constructed. But what we have is a carryover from many, many years with R six A zoning. Um, that allows, you did that. If you look to our zoning text, all right, you'll see that R six, now this is cut and paste. This, this matrix in our, in our ordinance is a lot more than what I'm showing you here, right? Okay, I'm just trying to highlight that R six A to the far right, you'll see the letter P for manufactured home, class A and/or class B for residential occupancy. You'll see P five for manufactured home, class C. And then you'll further see Z for manufactured home park included, class C. Uh, but then, then you see approved under section, number to be entered at a later date. This is in our zoning law and I have no idea what that means. Number to be inserted or entered at a later date. I've got no clue whatsoever. Um, and so, when you look at these things, you see the P five up there. It says C section to be inserted at a later date. That information doesn't exist in our zoning ordinance. It just exists as P means permitted use, permitted by right, in zoning. So, a manufactured home or mobile home is permitted by right in zoning R six A, period. You don't get to choose, all right? It's permitted by right. You can't say, well, I don't wanna have those over there now. I don't have any of this. No, it's permitted by right in our zoning, our law, our test. That's part of their police power as a board to adopt these zoning measures and to enforce that throughout the town. Um, so, we have several of those R six A lavender zones. They are in a state of disrepair, flux, dilapidation, light, whatever you wanna call it, okay? And so, we have to look at that. So, I wanted to highlight, you notice the blue circle to the left? This also came out tonight. Um, they didn't know this, but they were talking to this very issue based on their revaluation of the building of Haylen Farms on O'Dell Road, okay? So, they had no idea, Mr. Staff. They're just here to give you the, the rebound now. So, I want you to think about this for a second. This is what's known as code planes. Now, how many original units? I did not know the zoning administrator to ask how many original units were put in both planes. I simply counted the numbers there. And I come up with approximately two hundred and twenty-five mobile homes and manufactured homes, C, A, B, whatever you wanna call them, in both planes. So, technically, I could be correct or incorrect, but the number is what we have to think about. So, you'll notice, it's how many units now? This is a critical question you have to ask yourself. This is a critical question you have to ask yourself. And what does the minimum housing impact? Eleven units to be removed or demolished. That's the current process that we're going through when you look at minimum housing and some of these structures that are out there, um, not just in R six A, but everywhere, but everywhere. So, this, this particular project, book planes, right now, they're taking and putting ten new units. Now, uh, good, they're permitted by right. There's no change in this zoning. They can do that. The question is, what is new units? So, then you go back to that very definition here of class C, class A, class B. And so, there's different types of manufactured mobile homes. There's those that are vinyl siding, there's those that are aluminum siding. There are those with metal roofs and those with shingle roofs. There's those with eaves and those with not. There are sixteen-foot bays and fourteen-foot bays. Um, but there's all kinds of different types. So, I won't get into the definitions, but I just want you to keep that, keep, let you bear that in mind as you look going forward. So, how many units are, are impacted by minimum housing? And when's the last time you rode through some of these R six A zones? I do it, okay? I do it. Property tax, the revaluation. This is an interesting little caveat to that question about the income approach. So, this is the current tax bill record for oak plains. It's forty-one acres. The tax bill is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars per forty-one acres or roughly about five hundred and sixty dollars per acre. All right, five hundred and sixty dollars, sixty dollars per acre. What would it be with more units? This tax bill is from twenty seventeen. All right, it doesn't change unless it goes down based on less units. So, you heard, you know, depends on what's happening, disruption. And so, this one in particular has been in decline. All right, it's been in decline. And so, it generates roughly twenty-one thousand dollars a year of, uh, afterlabor property tax based on income approach in town in Spring Lake. Comparatively, right beside it, they also mentioned a new construction on O'Dell Road. Haylen Farms. Here's just one location. You see the circle there says seven twenty-five Haylen Farms. I asked about construction versus income and how do you do that for a new unit? This one in particular, um, if you look at the top, it says the value is thirty-five thousand dollars. But if you look at the tax down below, it says the spring lake tax is two hundred and fifty-nine hundred dollars. You don't get two hundred and fifty-nine dollars on the value of thirty-five thousand bucks. You don't work that way. Uh, in fact, mathematically, it actually equals out to like two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred, based on the sales comp. And so, you can see this transition between the two thousand seventeen and a number right now in today's dollars in terms of how that impacts the, the, the revaluation, that's the, uh, the tax, you know, afterlabor tax. So, with that said, now, if you compare that, that one particular lot is point one eight acre at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars or two, you know, two hundred and fourteen dollars or four lots per acre is eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars per acre. So, you know, how do you look at the zoning when it comes to the, you know, the value per acre, uh, the light, the, the things that are associated with the density of the population versus, you know, small, small lots but more homes or little to no lots in a bunch of, uh, manufacturing homes? I'm not suggesting one is right or one is wrong. I'm just suggesting that you have to be cognizant of this, especially during those revaluation fees and the impact it has. And so, later tonight in my manager's briefing, I'll be talking about the impact of the revaluation process because most people don't understand, uh, the percentages. You know, when we talk the percentages, and I don't mean that in any kind of negative way whatsoever. It's just that they're hearing sixty-two percent, a hundred and twenty-one percent. You know, they're all over the place. But at the end of the day, when you talk about dollars and cents, they get that. That's how we need to, to register and start having conversations about the reval and what it means. And so, my attempt to do that is the two slides later, the manager's, manager's briefing. Um, so, what do we do with R six A zoning? Uh, this is text right out of your zoning text. And so, the board, as part of this, police powers, its zoning powers, is authorized to initiate changes to the zoning map, to make text amendments to the zoning map. But there's a process that you have to do that because these are, since they are police powers, they can represent, they can represent, you have to do things by statute. You can't just decide I'm gonna do something, this is what I'm gonna do. So, as a creature of the state, you have to follow the law of the state. You have to follow due process. This one in particular, I think, is really interesting. The regulations and the number, area and boundaries of districts established by this chapter may be amended, supplemented, changed, modified or repealed by the Board of Armin on its own motion or on a petition after public notice and hearing as been provided by law, but no amendment shall become effective unless it is first submitted to and reported on by the planning board. Who is the planning board? Cumberland County. So, you would have to initiate this text amendment through the planning board and wait for a recommendation of yes or no or whatever, you know, they can recommend. They can't make a decision. You still have to make that decision. But it's, it's a procedure, it's a process. What do you wanna do and how do you wanna do that? Second to that, um, you're running into a problem with current state law. Last year, uh, we first had this brief conversation about this owner around September, October. And December, the state passed, um, a law, right? That took away your down zoning powers. You always had limitations on down zoning. But basically, they said, you know, you can't do this. You can't take and reduce, reduce the density in this property because it has a vested right. So, as you move, move through that, you'll see right here, this came to us recently in email. So, the General Assembly is now revisiting this issue in terms of down zoning authority. And so, this House bill is twenty-four is to resort, restore down zoning authority. And you see other versions of that House bill as well. And so, what it's doing is saying, if you're going to, uh, have a creature of the state and that local government is closest to the people in that community, then they should be the one making decisions regarding that zoning, okay? Not the state, but you have this kind of, this flow that we're in. So, it comes down to that question of what do you do with R six A zoning? You'll notice that color is not lavender. It's R six A, Z, C, Z, conditional lavender. So, there's procedures in place for us to change it, but not to the extent of some of the things that you might need to look at. So, um, as, as just kind of lead into the, the next topic a little bit later, um, with the valuation, the, the revaluation, folks' net worth increased by a certain percentage. But their cash flow didn't. So, on paper, their net worth is more. And so, then we start looking at it from zoning and the, your, the impact of those zoning and exclusionary zoning. These are the things that you guys have to wrestle with and tackle. As far as I know, this will be your first budget to approve and adopt outside of L G C. Um, and it is a least. It's, it is something that's gonna be hard to tackle and adjust to. Um, and I admit that upfront. So, uh, the question becomes and remains, what do we do with R six A zoning? Mine would be simple is that you can't just simply downzone. You need to have kind of a late and soon approach with the state. But I think I need to engage planning agencies to look at how do we roll out the R six A zoning. You don't wanna wash twenty-three B, wash twenty-three B. And so, me particularly, um, right, wrong or indifferent, um, I am completely happy with the density associated with that for planes. All right, so, if you can get two hundred and twenty-five units, go for it. But, all right, the, the creation of wealth in the community comes through homeownership, not through home rentals. So, how do you move the R six A zoning to allow other permitted uses, right? That raises the entire community. And that, I think that's the strategic initiative that you need to be thinking about. When we go back into our next session on strategic planning, um, we got to schedule this last one about the issues. One of those focus areas was about economic development and about having housing availability. And so, we can talk all day about mobile homes, duplexes, apartments, single-family residential units, but it's about housing availability. And you control that, um, or you encourage that through your zoning policy. And this is one of those carryovers forever and a day that I think this community needs to tackle as it looks forward to how do you, how do you have growth and development in a community and what does that look like? With that, that's all I got. I just wanted to highlight it. And so, my suggestion would be, as part of our strategic plan initiatives, uh, would be for us to, um, get either through the COG, Council of Governments, or through an independent planning agency, provisions or rewrites consistent with state law and what we can do with R six A zoning. We're not ready for comprehensive planning in regards to the zoning. Uh, we're not ready for what's known as a unified development ordinance. We're far from anywhere from that. But we still need to look at some of these, these particular types of zoning to figure out what the future looks like. That would be my recommendation to consult and hire someone to rewrite these words consistent with state law. And do you rate it?
Yeah, no, there's several legal ramifications we have to be aware of when, um, dealing with this particular type of reason. Um, may I have a question?
Yes. Um, thank you, ma'am. Um, when you say, uh, rewrite, uh, the zoning laws, are we gonna wait and see what the, um, outcome is gonna be with the, yeah, with the down zoning before we start that or we're gonna just start the process and be there to act based on that, um, that bill?
I think that you should start the process with the assumption that it doesn't change, okay? Because you look at how you can enhance the use of this R six A by not downzoning or decreasing the density, but how you can encourage development in that R six A. Second to that, you should have a separate version to where if you have the downzoning authority, um, then you should have, be able to do that in certain places. I've talked about mystic circle multiple times in this meeting. That's one case where it might be very, very appropriate, right, to downzone that and because it's surrounded by single family. Um, and so, you could have some, some, some level of, of different encouragement for development of that property. So, I think, uh, a kind of a parallel approach is- So I think, uh, a kind of a parallel approach is, is your.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Larkin?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Mr. Rory, one of the things I've talked to many of the developers and, and over time, there was the, the transition from mobile homes in, into more single-family duplex type of thing. And so there's a pause in, in doing the mobile home parks. I think over time, that what has been missing is as the mobile home parks decay and start to degrade, that there was not a plan to, to remove those and to, to build going forward. And, and I think that's part of the missing piece that hasn't been done. And this is kind of bringing to light, uh, what we should be looking for in, in the zoning powers. So, thank you.
One more thing, you mentioned using, potentially using a third-party source to, to, what I hear do with Cumberland Planning?
Should be doing. No. You could, you could initiate the text amendment change through Cumberland County Planning, but you cannot authorize Cumberland County planning to initiate the text amendment change. That's why you need a third-party planner to initiate the change.
Okay. I was just curious if we're already planning, planning board? Uh, Mayor President?
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Didn't we just have a big text amendment change with the one-sixty D that we were required to have our certain down?
That was this, that was this, this downzoning authority. There was, there was other things too.
Okay.
But this was one of them, building code issues, uh, there was a ocean transit issue.
All right, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much, Mr. Rory. What else do you have as a question? Should I give it to you?
This is a big.
Oh, you finish it?
Yeah.
Oh, we get to pass it along. So we don't get to hear from very much, so it's always a pleasure. Uh, the Jada item eight, the Resolution twenty, twenty-five zero one, Board of Commissioners of the Town of Spring Lake, adapting the electronic records and imaging policy and procedures. Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, we are trying to do a more paperless approach. So that means, um, scanning a lot of our documents in that are still, uh, required by the retentive schedule. But since we wanna go more paperless, it is requi, it is required from the NC, the NCR that we have a electric records policy in order to be more paperless. So I am recommending to, uh, approve this resolution so I can get it sent off to NC, the NCR, uh, for them to have it in their system that we are more paperless and will have of all our records scanned into the cloud.
I almost wanna stand up and clap for this resolution. Um, absolutely. Now let's look ahead and push this through. Mayor President?
I'll hold hard when you want to make this motion. I have all of this paper, so yes, I am feel for you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Hi, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor? This motion heavily carries. We are ready for that. All right, sir. All feels good to most of you guys. And I know our staff could be more, uh, terrified and excited about this because somebody's gonna have to digitize all this stuff. So, can we, can we hold like a, a rally and let the citizens come in and help us digitize forty-five years of paper? All right, sir, well, I, I do have just a few updates. Uh, so Dr. Hales, while you're still here, I want to let you know that I did get to meet with, um, the principals of Pine Forest, Manchester, W T Brown, and Spring Lake Middle. Um, and this was about our Paint the Town initiative, which they are extremely excited about. But while I had them at the table, I took the image of saying, hey, let's coordinate a regular meeting between us, you, and the town. Let's all sit together. So I just want you to know that I've already put that out there. They are ready for it and if you're available, we're available. We can meet here and let's continue this process of applying pressure, uh, so that we can make sure our schools are taken care of. Yes, thank you. Absolutely. I'll text you some dates for that. But again, that meeting with them was, was wildly successful to sit with those principals and how that their faces just lit up with the, the potential of partnering with the town on such a creative outlet, uh, and being able to provide recognition. This is the unity and camaraderie and that if you wanna go fast, go long, if you wanna go far, go together, uh, this is the epitome of that. And so, uh, I'm super excited that this project can be the catalyst for bringing our school systems together. Um, lunch with the mayor is?
It's canceled for this month because you will be out at, uh, a, a conference.
So with that being said, I'll be at City Vision.
Excuse me, no, you'll be at the Housing Summit.
I'll be at the Housing Summit. Which is great. So, um, we are formally formulating a housing task force, which will be chaired by our mayor, Pro Tim. Um, and right now, we are, we're going out to seek information. She and I will be visiting a housing summit so we can learn more about, um, workforce housing, different types of housing, and how we can bring those things, the resources back to Spring Lake. That goes right along with what our manager was saying. Um, we need homeownership in order to build wealth in this community. Um, and we do that by going out and giving those resources and bringing them back to our community. So I'm super excited about that. So lunch with the mayor, we can. Um.
We have lunch at the court.
Uh, I also attended the mayor's association's, uh, winter membership meeting this mor, or last week. Uh, and we were able to talk about, a bit more about this downzoning. This is an issue, um, that the mayors across the state of North Carolina are joining, joining together with, um, the North Carolina League municipalities to press our legislation, uh, our legislators about giving or selling out of municipal powers. Uh, but this isn't just for the downzoning. This is about our powers and our ETJs as well. Uh, so just know that this fight is being fought, this fight is being fought, um, with our legislators through the lobbyists at the North Carolina League municipalities, which we are very, very fortunate to be a part of. Um, I will be bringing back to the board, um, a topic of discussion. You may have heard a little bit about it, but it has been heavily discussed at our county. Um, the expansion of I six eighty-five into our community and how this could potentially impact Spring Lake. Um, so right now, the expansion is already ha, or the talk of the expansion is happening at the General Assembly. You may have seen new signs coming in on, uh, eighty-seven north that says future corridor to I six eighty-five. So this can directly impact Spring Lake, both positively and negatively. It depends on us having a seat at the table. Us doing our background research and making sure that we're advocating for Spring Lake. What we don't want to happen is this corridor is built and it's built around us and then we become a bypass city and they're jumping things off further down the road and it kills us. Or we can advocate for a stop on I six eighty-five that helps Fayetteville, that helps Hope Mills, Cumberland County, and definitely helps Spring Lake by offloading that traffic right into our community. Um, it's having a corridor that connects us to two eighty-five, which also connects us to, um, ninety-five is great for business, business expansion, business growth. Uh, so there's a lot, there's a pros and cons for both sides. I highly encourage you, I'm gonna be bringing this back to, um, more than likely at our, um, next work session so that we can really, uh, dig into this, weigh the pros and cons, and figure out which direction we wanna go with this expansion because it's coming whether we're at the table or not. Uh, I'd much rather us have a say than what's happening than us be the recipients of what they give us. That's all that I have. Mayor President?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so one thing I do have, I really wanna mention, um, the application period is now open for nonprofit assistance program. We have a lot of nonprofits in Spring Lake and I don't think they, um, get a chance to, um, apply to these funds because, you know, a lot of times they don't know about it. So I'm putting it out there, these meetings are on YouTube and on Cumberland County, North Carolina Station. So that application period has opened and, uh, you can go into the county, you can apply for up to fifty thousand dollars. And there, that's a lot, you can do a lot in Spring Lake with that. And so, um, I'm trying to see, we, it, it closes on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. That's where it closes. So spread the word, uh, that the county is accepting applications for that. And there will be, many of us are going to the North Carolina League municipalities, uh, Town of State dinner Wednesday? Yeah, Wednesday. We'll be traveling to Raleigh. We'll get an opportunity to, um, see, sit down and eat and, um, talk to our legislators and, um, some of our, uh, other colleagues. And, um, as the mayor said, I will also be traveling to listen to the housing summits Thursday.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, the only thing that I have is on this coming Thursday at six P M over at two forty-Fourth Street, which is the Spring Lake Recreation Center, we will have our community watching it with the Spring Lake Department. So, um, bring your friend, bring yourself, and we'll see you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Larkin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just one, first topic, military veterans, various advisor committee, we need this one night. We still have two members short on our committee. So if you are interested in joining the, the impact committee and serving our military and our veteran population, tomorrow night is, is our meeting. And next topic is cleanup. It's gonna be this Saturday. Mayor, do you remember how many pounds we collected last cleanup?
Six thousand.
Four hundred.
Twenty-three.
We had twenty-three hundred pounds that we collected. So we'll be back out on, on March first cleaning up the town, uh, going out into our zones, working to, to improve our, our town as we go here. Military banner program has, has gone live. It is up on the website. So if you know any people that want to have their banners flown for the first time, that they can do that, or those that are returning, there's gonna be a, a format they'll have to fill out just for liability purposes, if it's for whatever, that's, that's gonna be coming out as well. Mr. Rory, for you and the town staff and all the people that have been involved in Veterans Park, you noticed the improvements that are coming along? The sign is still sitting back out here. It'll get out eventually, but the gazebo, the, the bricks that are, that are put out there, the sidewalks that have been done, the trees that are along Route Street that have come out, that anticipating the sidewalk coming in for the linear park that's been, been done. Thank you. Thank all the employees for your hard work on that. Without you all, this project would not be as far along as it is. Looking forward to seeing that on Memorial Day. We have our Memorial Day event at Veterans Park. So anticipating a, a wonderful, wonderful event for that. So that'll be coming up. And, and Mayor, this one, I'm in charge of you and, and Mr. Rory on. Mendoza Park has, I've seen lots of improvements, seen the stuff. Last couple of weeks, maybe it's because of the weather, haven't seen any, any further progress on Mendoza Park out there. Uh, we're getting close with the weather being warm. I'd love to see that, that park finished so our kids can have spring and summertime fun and festivities out there on those new playground equipment.
We just have to let the concrete settle, play it, you know, keep it so.
People are watching.
Mm-hmm. I'm watching.
And that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Awesome. Um, you made me remember one thing that I wanted to make sure that we highlight. Chief Williams has been working on a pit project of mine, these streetlights on Bragg Boulevard. So if you've noticed, um, we've had, coming in from Fort Bragg, I was going to say, maybe, coming in from Fort Bragg, you'll see on the right-hand side that there's about ten new streetlights. On the other side, there's about ten or twelve new streetlights that aren't on yet. They are working on that right now as we speak. They have about four more lights to go in and then we will have a fully-licked entryway into Spring Lake. So thank you, Mr. Williams. He has been literally beating Duke upside the head to get this stuff done for about a year and a half now. So, thank you, Jason. Commissioner Bosses?
Hey, Mayor. So the appearance committee, uh, has a meeting coming up, uh, in February as well. And, uh, we did get an application today, uh, and so we're excited to fill that last seat. But we got excellent crew working and, uh, happy for the amount of work that they're putting in. We are also applying for another grant for some more cash money to get some more artwork done in this town. Uh, you don't have to worry so much, Mr. Rory, on this one. But I am gonna be bringing this back to the board because I wanna get a consensus. Uh, may need to get approval because what we intend to do in override, uh, Eagles review, let me just give you that, is, uh, to get educated artwork at Mendoza Park. Okay? I think it'll tie in really well with the other improvements we have going on. And, uh, so the general idea is to, uh, have state, um, symbols and some kind of education element, also a three-D element. I think that would be really cool that kids can be interactive with some of our art. And so, uh, that's what we're trying to bring, uh, that we need to catch money for. And, uh, and so thank you for mentioning that, uh, when you're talking about the park and, uh, that people are paying attention. And I have a lot of people, just like you guys, are even outside of Spring Lake asking, when, when's park gonna be ready? And I'm like, well, if you're not Spring Lake resident, you're not allowed. I'm just kidding. Thank you, that's all.
You are allowed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rory.
For the manager's report tonight, um, I will do another closing nugget. The time is duly appropriate in that we've been waiting on this revaluation, uh, for a couple of months. We've had various conversations in regards to, um, a tax base effect digest, what's happening, what's going on. So, um, I want to talk in, as I said earlier, people, uh, it's, it's hard to get their thoughts wrapped around a percentage, right? Um, so I'm trying to break it down into what that impact means with numbers and not from, uh, the finance numbers, but from just kind of broad, uh, general overview. So that's what this first slide says, that these numbers are close, but they're not budgeted. So they're not absolute, okay? And so keep that in mind, that we heard tonight about appeals and exemptions. Ten percent, eleven percent, what does that do in terms of the impact with that percentage? We also know that we've got the focus, and we've already talked about in the past, about our utility. And so, you know, how do we, how do we have a sustainable, viable utility for the town of Spring Lake? Uh, that's a, that's important. So even though we'll be talking about that tonight, we have had a whole lot of conversations about the maintenance and the viable utility. In fact, um, one meeting, we had a, um, we're going through another grant process called our asset inventory assessment. Um, and I requested kind of a, a, a advance notice of what that means. Right now, um, we've been told that we need to figure out how to budget anywhere from sixty-five to seventy-five, even eighty million dollars to do, um, upgrades, improvements, and, um, fix with our sewer system, where as you talked about the same stuff, our sewer system and our water system. So, um, we already recognize, Jason, uh, the utilities folks are trying to fix somewhere on average of about four leaks a week. We're hemorrhaging water everywhere, right? And so we gotta figure out where that is. We're only building for about sixty percent of the water that we purchase. So where's it going? What's going on? But we still have to purchase it. So I won't be talking a lot about the utility, but, uh, we're seeking some grant assistance for eighty million dollars. The second part of that would be if you, if you have an eighty million dollar price tag and you fund that at five-hundred thousand dollars a year, you see where this is going, right? So we're gonna be chasing, 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 chasing. And so then, then you have the conversations that, uh, our water was off too long because of the valves, like the, the valve, all kinds of things. Uh, Jason and the crew spent almost all day on a backup without too much detail at Walgreens. So you've got something impacting the business when they're having to jet it out. It's been, so the old line had already collapsed and someone in the past had diverted it. There's no record of that.
Is it?
They just have to go out there, dig it up and find it and figure out how to jet it. So those are some of the problems. And I would like to also, uh, say thank you to staff for. those are some of the problems. And I would like to also uh say thank you to staff for giving in and getting the stuff done and focusing on it. So but I did wanna have a little budget nugget about the dollars and cents associated with the revaluation. Some of this stuff will look familiar. Keep in mind that I'm only talking about the general fund, okay? I'm not talking about the utility fund. I'm just talking about the general fund. So just for a little quick highlight of what we're talking about here, I'll try to walk through this. Um our current budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see that number up there says three million, one hundred and thirty, nine hundred and ninety-four. That's what's budgeted for real property taxes. That's the revenue, okay, the what's coming in, the real property taxes. Over to the right, you'll see one million, nine hundred and forty-one, two hundred and sixteen dollars. That's if you assume a sixty-two percent increase, even though you've heard all kinds of stuff. So if you have a sixty-two percent increase in the tax base, the tax digest, right, and you keep the tax rate, the seventy-four point one cents, the same, you'll see a impact for twenty-five, twenty-six, a five million, seventy-two thousand dollars. Once again, let me emphasize, this number is not completely correct, all right? It's broad. And so we could wrap our thoughts around what the impact is of this revaluation. Following down below that, you'll see a number of local option sales tax of three million, four eighty-eight, two ninety-five. Off to the side, you'll see in brackets parentheses, uh one million, four ninety-three, eight fifty-six. So the impact for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is one million, nine nine four, four three nine. What does that mean? Uh the county, um Cumberland County, county commissioners have been trying to restructure the tax distribu- sales tax distribution for over twenty years. They will accomplish that goal this year. What that means is, is that they will be switching from population over to ad valorem property values. So when they were distributing it to the town based on population, we're roughly two percent of the total population in Cumberland County. When they switch over to property values or ad valorem, we're gonna be at one percent of the total value of the county. Hence, we're gonna recognize about a fifty percent loss in what our town, once again, not exact, in our sales tax. So even though we budgeted this year three million, four eighty-eight, two ninety-five, next year, we're gonna have to budget somewhere to the tune of one million, nine ninety-four, or the equivalent of a one point four nine three million dollar loss. So comparing the two numbers, everything's staying the same. At uh with sixty-two percent increase, you'll see an increase in that ad valorem tax of one million, nine four one. But that's gonna have to cover the reduction of the sales tax. So the net from that is down here at the bottom. You'll see that these numbers here, the blue where it says four forty-seven, three sixty, it means that with all things remaining the same and those assumptions intact, a sixty-two percent increase, right, and the seventy-four cent tax rate, seventy-four point four cent tax rate staying the same, it's gonna generate four hundred and forty-seven thousand, or roughly five hundred thousand dollars in additional added. To the left of that, you'll see that currently one cent at seventy-four point one is equivalent to forty-two thousand dollars. With the new revow, one cent or will be basically, the the revenue neutral number, I'll get back into that, is forty-seven cents, but one cent will be equivalent to sixty-seven thousand dollars. So now the value of each penny goes up by roughly sixty-two percent, okay? Um so that's what I mean about earlier, it's not hard math, it's just difficult math, um to kind of get your thought wrapped around and go, okay, what's going on? Here are some things that we're already talking about in terms of impacts. We are needing, the fire department and the police department have already prepared their personnel budgets for next year. They're the only two departments that have done that. They are the um test case because they're also the largest departments in terms of personnel costs. They are very labor intensive and they have a lot of folks. Um so this is just a quick run down here. You'll notice a a connection of the number. If if CPI tags in at around five percent, or if you do a five percent incremental budget increase, a simple five percent inflationary rate budget increase across the board for pension, health insurance, you know, if health insurance only goes at five percent, we better be clapping, uh having other digit numbers, right? Health insurance or just general inflation in particular, um that comes at a cost of that same cost of about four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. See the connection? All right? Um not hard math, it's difficult math. If we decide to put four more police officers on that are currently not in this budget, all right, and we froze those positions vacant to balance this budget that they're currently in, if we decide to put the make that a priority, put them back on, that comes at a cost of about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the four officers. That's not an all-in cost. The cost to outfit those officers is roughly thirty-five hundred bucks. So you add them back, you gotta buy the leather, the uniforms, everything that goes with it, okay? So another thirty-five hundred dollars for four. The next thing you know, you have another fifty thousand dollars to deal with. We just made a decision that ain't involved, um incremental, how all of those pieces come together. Uh same with firefighters, uh a firefighter position, uh salary benefits is about sixty-two, six nine four. Um that number is assuming that we take the firefighters and hire them at a competitive rate. Um I think that right now, we're probably about six thousand dollars in the hole in terms of what we hire our firefighters for uh compared to those uh local governments or those fire departments within thirty-minute travel distance or forty-minute travel distance. So we're losing people to a thirty-minute drive. Remember, they work a day on, two off, two on, three off. They could work these very strict schedules. It's not like they drive them when they be driving. So we lose people for those higher salaries with the same benefit level, and it's really not that hard to drive. Um so training ground, base ground. So when you start thinking of it that way, if we had three more firefighters and another hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, we froze and unfunded six positions in the fire department, not just three, in our current budget. That was that whole Anchester district, you know, that route, having taken with you there. Five police cars, this is the one that uh I hate to say it, I love it, uh but in a way I do, um because one of the things that we as a town are weak on is a capital improvement plan. Um we do not have a designated replacement schedule for unit one oh four in the police department or engine two in the fire department. That just exists in the heads out there. There's no schedule for that. So you're faced with a a conversation about how many cars do you replace per year? So if you count the number of officers and as a policy, you're gonna take and run those cars at a hundred and twenty thousand miles, right, and the cost of one of those cars equipped is sixty-five thousand dollars. And so you need to have five of those purchases every year. But what's happened, not just here, but everywhere, okay, is that they're like, well, we'll only purchase a couple of cars this year. We won't purchase any cars this year. And so in the with the lack of a a capital improvement plan or a replacement plan that exists just in heads, that doesn't exist on paper, you can't forecast what your debt's gonna be. You can't forecast, um to call out names, Chuck Chuck Ridenzeybor, Bull in the Right-Ways, until that thing breaks down. It's probably a pretty good idea for us to know how to replace that on some type of schedule. So that is one of the things that that uh that's what I mean about our life history, all this whole car conversation. So we currently have, uh I'll keep it as simple as I can, fifteen vehicles, police vehicles, that we have leased, all right? They're coming to the end of their term, of the lease term. So we're looking at purchasing those police vehicles outright. We have a Zoom conference moderator enterprise. Um at a cost somewhere of twenty, twenty-nine to thirty-five thousand dollars, that's kind of the target. Um but and then not lease five more this year, start moving to this replacement schedule, we're gonna get five, 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 five. And so if we can get away with this this year and just hold the line for a couple of years, we'll have that whole cycle set up for us, five per year, five per year, five per year. What's gonna be missing is having fun, five per year, five per year, five per year. It's it's forever, it's a recurring cost. Um that question of cash or finance. And so then you look at interest rates and the terms, how do you finance a police vehicle? Should you finance a police car? Should you finance a fire truck? You know, police car's sixty-five thousand, fire truck's a million dollars. And so if you put them on the same replacement schedule any given year, you have to decide the term between, this one's gonna be ten years, seven years, or five years. And so that gets it all C I P all right. Um this is simple, simple math in terms of the impact this rebound. So if you look at that bottom line in that circle, right now, we can already target one point two million dollars in additional expenses. And if you notice, most of that is five percent incremental budget, then all the rest of it is equivalent to, okay? Just those topics, labor and the capital expenses. There's nothing on there for a backhoe, no lawnmowers, nothing, just those simple terms. And so when you think of that as a simple budget equation, if you take our current budget of eight nine five, eight million, nine hundred and fifty-nine, and you add that one million, two two five, that means that you have a general fund budget of ten million, one eighty-four. You come underneath it and you look at a real realistic budget equation, you've got a current budget of eight nine five nine, and you add what the difference would be, the four forty-seven with a sixty percent increase, right, uh in holding the tax rate the same, you're only gonna look at an increase in revenue of our our new budget of nine million, four four oh six. You're still seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the hole, based on what your priorities are. So is your priority gonna be police officers, firefighters, backhoes, lawnmowers, um colas, uh health insurance? All of those things run uh the whole camp of what you're trying to do. And so that down there, when you see where it says strategic planning initiatives, code enforcement and block, we've got thirty-four thousand dollars budgeted to tear down, demolish some of these buildings. Once you go through procedural due process, it takes a lot of time. And I trust you, we're not getting anywhere fast, okay? And it's frustrating me. If it's frustrating you, I promise you it's frustrating me, okay? Because the best projects is eight. Street roads and sidewalks, we have bid opening tomorrow. Um just something for you to think about on that is, you see that doc that power, uh other revenues power bill, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars? That's what we get annually for painting roads. We've accumulated just over a million dollars. This year we'll reach that one point five million dollars. When we have the bid opening tomorrow, okay, um it will reveal for us the cost for one mile. So now you take what you have, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and divide it by whatever the cost is for one mile of a a simple meal paid, and you're gonna come up with a number, you might be able to do a half a mile a year of the thirty miles you got in the city. Um simple math, difficult choices, okay, difficult choices. And so um recreation, special events, I will pick on you now, and those are best projects, complete the project. But putting the uh playground equipment in there is good, but the rest of the facility remains the rest of the facility. There's a lot of stuff that you gotta do down there, other than just the playground. And so whether it's art, you know, three D, I love it, okay? Um but that's where you hear me talking about bringing clean. A simple little thing of painting the building. What you can't see, right? Right now, what you can't see is that Jason, as the fire chief, dressed up like the Michelin pirate, okay, in a suit, hazmat suit, and painted that side of the fire station. So we're looking at how do we do the walls, the roof. Now, our cost in that, the labor cost is a sum cost, he's willing to do it. You should see the ladder he gotta climb up. Um but maybe the cost is the paint. So this idea of someone, uh sorry, uh doctor, but uh you see about the liability of stuff, stuff, we have to think about how we do that stuff. Um and so recreation, special events is another one of those topics. How do you roll out and do certain things, um whether it's appearance, street, what's gonna be the priority? That's why it's critical um for us to get through the strategic plan and these initiatives. Um and once again, to focus you, uh the day is coming, okay, for us. That's not one of our priorities. I can't, you know, spin our wheels on this. This is what we have to focus on. And it has to be big picture utilitarian stuff, uh utilitarian, what what serves the most people, um to get this stuff, because that's really where we're at. Um I'm not going to spend too much time on here, but every time we go through a revow, you see that number down there, forty-seven cents is the revenue neutral number, okay? What revenue neutral means is that you say to create the same amount of dollars, this is what your tax rate would be. So to create the same amount of three million, one hundred and thirty, give or take, right, um with the with the assessed value, that means your tax rate would be forty-seven cents. That would be as valuable, as irresponsible as any one could get, okay? You're not in a position to do that. I'm sorry, that's the truth, all right? Um it it's a question of ethics. Don't tell people, you gotta say, this is what it is, this is where we're at. So um one cent will still be sixty-seven thousand, but the revenue neutral means no no additional revenue is at forty-seven cents. But try this one on for size. If you wanted to take zero out that four forty-seven, three sixty, that becomes a number of sixty-seven cents, all right? So that's the real math. And so I don't, you know, I appreciate and I was glad that they uh came, accepted the invite to come and do this conversation. And I want all the public to know, yes, property values increasing. That's why I said that uh it seemingly overtake, it takes eight years for people's net worth has increased, but their capital has not. So um we have to be cognizant of that. And then how do we roll out these services and how do we do certain things? So um that is why I wanted to give you this budget nugget about the impact of the revow, not the simple percentage of the revow, or what's the impact and how does that math shake out and how do we place the budget for it. I'll note, we're working, but it's gonna be leased. And we'll continue to work this with that. I'm done, Mayor. Okay, there's one more. I want to do a little posse vote. Okay? Do you see the room in the back set up differently?
Yeah.
Um basically, that is our conference training room. Um we have no other place, but every Wednesday, I have anywhere from twenty to twenty-five people engaged in a program uh known as the Twenty-One Year Refusal Laws of Leadership and John Maxwell. And so um the different chapters of the Twenty-One laws have been given to each member. Jimmy has one, Harold has one, Jason has one, Danny has one. Um they all have to do a presentation of a minimum thirty minutes regarding the law. And um I'm quite pleased and quite proud, even Carly has one, um quite pleased and quite proud of how the staff is engaging in this. This isn't a learning, not teaching or anything. All we're doing is about what conversation we're having, a conversation about what leadership looks like, what are the things that we need to focus on, process, right? All the things that comes with what we're trying to do, um whether it's in the fire department, it really doesn't matter, it should be seamless across all the parks. And so I'm quite quite proud of how we got, I think we got three meetings left, um which means we've got around seven more uh presentations. And um I'm glad to see them doing it. The next one is gonna be a session on how money works. Um that'll be the next topic that we have. Thank you. I gotta keep the voice professional. Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome. Um so again, um this is a lot of information, Francis. I hope that uh this was a big issue to the residents with this breakdown, because it is, it's a lot to see um the difference between our tax, we have revenue, Mr. Rory, but I'm so grateful that uh Mr. Rory broke it down just to let you know that uh we need this money. We have so many, many, many massive issues that have to be addressed. Um and so this doesn't fix it, but it provides us in in And so this doesn't fix it, but it provides us an inch. We need several miles, but this is our first inch. Every thirty, we can, just the first step, so this is our first step. And so thank you for explaining that to us, Mr. Worry. So if there are no other updates, I will not want to take them all, keep going to closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three three one eight eleven eight three, it's early Friday, personally, and NCGS three one eight, one four three three one eight eleven eight four, Economic Development, Chris Thompson. So we'll push your light, man. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries for down closed session. Thank you all for coming out and focusing on James.
I have not seen you.
I have.
I looked at so many.
Are you all good about the letter to me?
Oh, why am I standing up?
Did y'all see it?
Oh yeah, that was good. I was like...
I only asked for eight minutes. Awesome, thank you.
Now I understand most of the time in a closed session, Commissioner Placios.
The who?
Mr. Thompson.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Me neither.
Are we still recording?
Did you see my face?
Yes. Why did you... Oh. Yes.